I'd like to call the Onslow County Board of Commissioners meeting for Monday, August 18th, 2025 to order at this time. We'll first ask our county attorney, Mr. Brett DeSalms, to provide the invocation. Mr. Salms?
Thank you, Chairman. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, be with the commissioners in their deliberations and bless them with wisdom and guidance as they address the items on tonight's agenda. We pray for our military and first responders who continue to serve our country with tremendous courage, commitment, and sacrifice. May all we do this day bring you honor and glory. Amen. Now with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here tonight, join me in a moment of silence.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to recognize the elected officials that are with us tonight. We'll start first with North Carolina representative, Mr. Wyatt Gable is here this evening, Sheriff Chris Thomas, Town Alderman, Mr. Rick Grant from North Topsail Beach, Town Council from Holly Ridge, Mr. Walter Zabiki, and the Mayor of Holly Ridge, Mr. Pete Parne. We appreciate you being here tonight. With that being said, we ask all in attendance, please set your cell phones to silent or vibrate mode at this time. And we'll start with the first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. But before that, we need a motion to amend the agenda to remove item 4A, PREZ 2025 00016. So moved. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. That as motion passes, we'll need to also need a motion to amend the consent agenda to remove item 2B, Mr. Beast. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. We now need a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Motion carries. Now with the approval of items on the consent agenda, if any board members has questions or concerns or like one of those items removed, now is the time to make that request. If not, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, hearing none. Motion carries. So we are now, Mr. Smitherman, I believe, to the public comments. And right now, the let everyone know that the board offers the public one opportunity to speak during the meeting. Comments should be limited to no more than five minutes and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. In accordance with the board's adopted rules of procedure, commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the commissioner comment period on the agenda. Mr. Smitherman?
Yes, sir. We have two people that have spoke, signed up to speak this evening. The first one is Ari Rakowitz.
I hope you will demonstrate more understanding and respect in your responses this time. Conducting this meeting is a political act, as is speaking during it or attending it. The board is violating its own policies in addition to the law and our rights by ignoring the Establishment Clause. Again, when I reference people, places, things, or ideas, I provide examples from interconnected issues to broaden your perspective so that you can better support members of your community with whom you disagree or about whom you care least. As I mentioned last time, the purpose of studying history is to avoid repeating mistakes. We did not need a repeat of the Holocaust, but we are experiencing one. And since marginalizing can compound, people of color who are also members of more than one marginalized group are still disproportionately affected by silence and persecution not directly tied to their skin color. Make choices with unity, sustainability, kindness, inclusion, equity, empathy, diversity, critical thinking, and compersion in mind. Saturday night was the most recent general meeting for the local NAACP chapter. The next meeting is September 20th at 6:00 p.m. For details or to donate, visit onslownaacp.org. Next time, I will read to you from the PFLAG material I introduced at the Board of Education meeting once I finish reading the Freedom from Religion Foundation Letter. You can find the resources I am reading from PFLAG at pflag.com. And you do have local allies who lead with love instead of fear religious hypocrisy and bullying. A chant I learned here in Jacksonville, "Straight, gay, black, white, one struggle, one fight." Find some like-minded allies at the Second Annual Like-Minded Alliance Community Block Party, also September 20th. Join us for family fun at the Downtown Riverwalk from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. For more details or to donate, email likemindedalliance@gmail.com. I have four questions left instead of my original six, and residents of Onslow County deserve answers to all eight. Of the four questions I asked last time, only one was answered appropriately by a commissioner during the meeting. And the results of the BOE budget meeting demonstrate that the Board of Commissioners is still contributing to voter suppression through underfunding and understaffing, a dedicated Board of Elections staff in addition to violating our First Amendment rights. I was disappointed to arrive at the established location for the Board of Elections workshop to learn that the meeting had been canceled or at least relocated. I'm still confused because they were in closed session by the time I got there. By the time I biked up to the follow-up meeting at the BOE office, they were in closed session, and I had to wait until the meeting concluded, which I didn't because I was trying to get here in time tonight. I understand the BOE's choice to begin once the board member from whom I learned that the BOE meeting was rescheduled was waiting here with me. I learned it from her. Why was the workshop canceled? How has the Board of Commissioners improved support since the initial budget passed? I was also disappointed to learn none of the municipalities are willing to fund early voting sites within their precincts, so the only early voting site at the Board of Elections is at the Board of Elections in Georgetown, sharing that tiny parking lot with animal control, and that once again, only representative options and not issues have been entrusted to the people for a vote. I've provided additional context regarding the concerns about voting and this historic area before and will return to that. Thankfully, all municipalities approved absentee by mail voting, and all voters are eligible. Request your ballot as early as now to be mailed October 3rd and returned by mail or hand-deliver it to the BOE anytime during early voting. The deadline to request an absentee ballot is the second Tuesday before the Election Day, and it must be received by the BOE by 7:30 on Election Day, but you cannot hand-deliver it then. If only we had 24-hour ballot drop boxes strategically placed throughout the county or enough staff and resources to perform the existing duties of the BOE. Voters can hope. For information on your voting options, visit ncsbe.gov/voting. To what extent have long-term or short-term projects proposed by the Georgetown Renaissance Association been funded? Have the county or city provided support to address poor lighting, access to electric outlets, and maintenance of the cemetery at Georgetown Park? These are the short-term things. I can't remember all of the long-term, and it's not in my script. Remember, y'all should be working together on this. I may per-- I will skip for time. The infrastructure issues will require more resources to address than ending the unconstitutional religious invocation, but it is your responsibility as the county commission to protect and serve all of the people of Onslow County. Please do better.
Thank you. Mr. Smitherman?
Yes, sir. Mr. Elliot Jarman is next.
Public speaking is not really my strong point. I don't really enjoy it, but here I am. My name is Elliot Jarman, and I come before you tonight not just as a resident of Onslow County, but as a voice for the many concerned citizens who feel overlooked, frustrated, and frankly disappointed. Over the past few months, we've seen the county allocate substantial funding, billions of dollars, for the development of a new county fire department. And while public safety is a priority we all share, I'm here to say that the people of Onslow County are deeply upset about what was left out of that funding plan, our volunteer fire departments. The very departments that have served our communities for decades, long before this initiative ever existed. Volunteer departments have been here through hurricanes, wildfires, wrecks, and structure fires without fanfare and without the full support they deserve. Yet, they receive no capital improvement funding in this plan, not for trucks, not for stations, not even for equipment updates. That's not just an oversight, it's a statement. A statement that the boots-on-the-ground heroes who've shown up time and time again are now being sidelined. This is not just about dollars, it's about fairness and it's about respect. The community is watching. I've spoken to residents, fire chiefs, volunteers, and taxpayers, and the message is clear. We want to see our longstanding departments treated as partners, not as afterthoughts. The men and women who volunteer their time to protect our families deserve the same level of investment as the new department being built from the ground up. We are not against progress, we are not against improving fire protection, but we are against imbalance. We are against funneling resources into one department while ignoring the vital needs of others who already serve with pride, skill, and honor. So tonight, I ask you on behalf of the people of this county to take a hard look at your budget priorities. Can you find room to fund capital improvements for the volunteer departments? Can you make this right before we push forward with a new model that risks eroding community trust? Let's not forget, volunteer fire departments are not just filling the gap, they're the foundation of fire protection in many parts of this county. They need your support, not just in words, but in your budget. Thank you for your time, and I sincerely hope you will listen to the public voices growing louder every day. And God bless each and every one of you.
Mr. Jarman?
We have now further speakers signed up, sir.
All right. Well, we'll go ahead and start with item four, public hearings. And Mr. Carter Metcalf, are you the first one here for this?
That's been put off.
Never mind, we took that one off. Yeah, so, well, there you go. We are moving on to the, Mr. Kevin Patterson with the quarterly financial report.
Carter, we're just spoiled. We're used to having you.
That's the truth. All right. With this, I will try to be brief on this. I do plan on presenting at the October meeting. We will have a draft financial statement for the audit report for you by that presentation, as well as we will have, of course, have the final numbers for the year-end. We are still going through the closeout now. With this, of course, breaking down the revenues for year, we have collected 143 of $143 million in property taxes. That is an excess of the sales tax. That has been a continual increase year over year. Sales taxes at June 30th are actually through July 31st. We have collected 67 million. That does include our Medicaid Hold Harmless. We do expect to receive approximately another $13 million, which will put us right on target. Our intergovernmental revenues are under budget right now, but then again, those are always on estimates. A number of our intergovernmental revenues depend entirely on our reimbursements and our spend rates, and they are traditionally under, our actual revenues are traditionally under where we spend because they are based on estimates primarily through DHHS. But so far, we are on, again, looking on our revenue budgets are on target for it. Property tax collections are staying on approximate trend. Our actual collections for the last three years are on top of each other. We have seen an increase over year over year of about $4 million for the last two years. That is just the natural growth in the property tax base. Sales taxes also received, fortunately, we have gone off, and I was worried about we would have a softening in our sales tax. We have not seen that right now. Like I said, for the month of May, we did receive $6.1 million, which is $200,000 over last year. If you compare this number to the previous revenue, this $63 million include the sales taxes, that 6.1 is the amount that we actually received in July, which was not in the, we received it after the report was generated, but the Medicaid Hold Harmless was in the previous number. It is not listed in here. So that's the discrepancy between the $63 million on this side and the $67 million on the previous side. When you count that in plus the additional collection that we expect to receive next month, that will be approximately, that should be at the $81 million mark, within 1.5% of that number. And again, sales tax is not quite as clean, but our sales tax collections are continuing. And fortunately, we have gotten back where we are slightly above previous years, but of course, that is subject to the overall economy. General fund expenditures by function, we can go over any detail you want, but our total expenditures are traveling, are well under budget. And with this, we do have some other items that we are going to be putting in. We are going to be calc, now that we have all of our payables in for the end of the year, we are going to be looking to transfer any lapsed health insurance premiums into our health reserve. So those calculations have not been met, but we are significantly under budget this year in the TEN Fund. And again, also just breaking out the expenditures, there's no significant change in the general function of the expenditures that we have and the pattern of expenses. And again, also just breaking out the numbers that we have with the expenditure by type going, of course, by salaries, operations, and capital. Now, in solid waste revenues, I did go off and notice just before I got up here that the total numbers are wrong. The total revenue for June 30th, 25, is $9,544,000, and the total revenue for '24 is $9.3 million. So, but we are on, obviously, above target for those revenue numbers. The expenditures, we do show a significant increase in operations, operational costs on this report over expenditures, but that is because in this report, the landfill closure, post-closure, and depreciation were keyed into those numbers. Those are non-budgetary items, it's a different level of accounting, so we are still actually under budget in the expenditures in the landfill as of last Thursday, of approximately $638,000. So we are there. But the increase in operating from 4.8 million to $7.9 million with the restatement in our landfill post-closure costs, we went from $1 million of closure, post-closure cost accruals to $3.3 million of accruals in the current, or in 2025. And of course, airport revenues are running consistent year over year, and the restricted intergovernmental, those are some of the federal fees that we're receiving, that will be just a timing difference on when those reimbursements are made. And expenditures are, of course, running as expected. For the grant, for grants as the updates, we do have the Resiliency Grant, which we have applied for with in coordination with Camp Lejeune as well as the City of Jacksonville. We should have the final determination in September, but I have done the follow-up internal control meeting with the agency, and we should have a, we're expecting a favorable determination to come with this report, and that could be a grant in excess of $1 million when that comes in, and that we will be using consultants for the majority of those services. Also, just as an additional note, we have made an offer for a grant manager position, and it has been accepted, so the tentative start date for our next grant manager is September 2nd. Are there any questions?
That was supposed to be your first one.
Okay. Save the best for last. Questions, comments? All right. I don't know if it was two minutes, but I tried. Thank you, Mr. Patterson. So now we move to item six, the quarterly Commissioners Committee reports. Does anyone want to volunteer to share? If you've had any--
Well, mine's short. I'd go first.
Okay.
So just got on the hospital board, so I've only been to one meeting, but I think there are some exciting things coming down the pipe, so can't say anything unfortunately, but I think we've got some good things. The hospital's making some good decisions. I'm excited to be a part of it.
Anyone else?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to speak on ONWASA real quick. ONWASA has a project to build a highway, a force main from Swansboro to Piney Green down Highway 24 that'll serve the needs of Swansboro community in the future. That project is approximately 30% to 40% completed. ONWASA is in the process of expanding the Pluris plant and the North Topsail Beach plant from 1.5 million gallons a day to 3 million gallons a day. That is a sewer plant that'll serve the Holly Ridge and Sneets Ferry areas in the future. There's also, we're working on a connection between Holly Ridge and Summer House that we'll be able to direct sewer flow between those two locations so that we can use whatever treatment options are available. We're working on two new wells in the Wachovia tract out in Camp Davis Industrial Park, and we're working to expand water treatment at our Dixon Water Treatment Plant from 4 to 6 million gallons a day. We're also installing what's called AMI meters. Those are meters that are connected by cellular service to our main office so that we don't have to drive trucks around all over the county in order to, in order to read your meters. ONWASA has over 60,000 water customers now, so water meters out there, and we've replaced about 1,000 of those meters with AMI meters, so that is a multi-year project that we'll be working on for some time in the future. And finally, ONWASA Board of Directors has asked that, that our towns, and this counts this committee, Commissioners, approve a resolution that would allow you to appoint non-elected officials to the ONWASA Board of Directors. I've said in several town meetings, the ONWASA Board of Directors is made up of all elected officials at this time, and six of our elected officials out of eight are currently up for reelection or not running for reelection. So the ONWASA Board has the potential of losing 75% of our board members in one year, and that is not a good way to run a multimillion-dollar corporation, which ONWASA currently is with over $63 million budget. And so I'm asking this, you Commissioners, and I'm asking the towns in Onslow County, Holly Ridge, and Swansboro have already approved our resolution, but we need to make this change and get our Board of Directors on three-year rotating schedules so that we don't have the potential in the future of losing 75% of our board all at one time. So that's what's happening at ONWASA, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Anyone else? All right. This is a report. I had a Juvenile Crime Prevention Committee meeting that I was not able to attend, so we'll have more information for you at the next committee updates. I have been working with the Topsail Island Shoreline Protection, that I've heard a lot about what's going on with legislation and our coastlines, in particular, oyster leases and the impact that that's having, and in particular in Onslow and Pender County. The oyster leases are growing rapidly, where the surrounding counties have moratoriums on those oyster leases, so everyone's coming to Pender and Onslow County waters. I know our beach inlet and sound committee, we got, it's by September, I think, it's coming up, that timeframe for that one. Lot of beach renourishment going on there in North Topsail Beach, so I'll keep you apprised of what's going on there as they're trying to continue to keep our coastline looking great and a great tourist destination for everyone in Onslow County. So with that being said, we'll go to our manager for his comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Speaking of our beach and our beaches and our island, we have noticed that we will be closing beach access number two and four effective immediately in anticipation of the storm, high surf warnings, and we encourage people to be very careful and avoid those dangerous currents. We are, we, you see above you, we had the "In God, We Trust" signs installed both here and on the exterior of the courthouse. Those were installed last week, I believe. And we are also working to, and the board's aware of this, but for the public's consumption, we are working to build a couple of EMS stations. We are behind the curve in bringing our EMS facilities to where they need to be and are beginning with two new stations, most likely just on the outskirts of Jacksonville, and also one in the stump sound area. And finally, the Fire Service Master Plan Steering Committee had its second meeting today and is interviewing consulting firms that will begin to work on that project with extended public engagement effort, which will include going into all of our fire departments, volunteer paid, federal DOD, city, towns, as well as public forums where the public can express their opinions on the future of how we manage fire service globally as a single service in Onslow County instead of different services based upon jurisdiction. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Commissioner comments. We'll go back around the circuit. Anyone have anything they'd like to share?
You want me to start again?
If you want to. Or we can go, Tony?
I don't matter. Go ahead.
All right.
You know, I gotta say, I've always been one that I like to hear differing opinions and sit down and talk to people who don't agree with exactly the way that I feel and believe. And I'm willing to sit down and talk to anybody who wants to discuss issues whether we agree or not. But we've been lectured for months and months about issues here in this building, and because I like to talk down, talk one-on-one with people who may agree or not with me, I actually had a one-on-one meeting with Ms. Ari, who has now stormed out of the room again for the third time. And when I listened to her rant and rave at me, which was basically the same rant that she's done with us every month for the last several months, and I tried to express some of my opinions, she got up and stormed out of the room, just like she has done here today again. You can't see that on the camera, I don't suppose, because she's going out the back door. But I know that I personally have tried to have a conversation with her and tried to relay to her what my opinions are on some of the issues that she has. Today, she brought an issue to the board and said that we weren't funding the Board of Elections. I talked to her about that personally, one-on-one, and we fund the board, we have funded the Board of Elections every year that I know of at almost exactly the amount that they asked for. We don't give away money to people that don't need it, and if they don't ask for it, we don't give it to them. And in election years, when we've had to, when we had shortages in the Board of Elections, we have increased their budget so that they had enough money to do what they need to do. I certainly believe that we fund the Board of Elections adequately, and we will continue to do that. As far as election rules, those are made by the General Assembly, and we don't have any control over whether we have drop boxes or any other kind of scam for our elections. That is up to the legislature. And she also mentioned the Georgetown Park, which is not even a county park, it belongs to the City of Jacksonville and has nothing to do with these county commissioners. So I appreciate her passion for her issues, but she doesn't understand, and she doesn't wait around long enough, and she won't listen when somebody tries to explain to her that there are other opinions beside hers. there are other opinions beside hers. And Mr. Jarman, I appreciate you coming tonight. I heard some misinformation there. There are only two volunteer fire departments that aren't getting funding for their capital needs, and they're not getting funding for their capital needs because they don't want to agree to a contract with Onslow County. And the Commissioners have worked for a year to get contracts with all of our volunteer fire departments to make sure that our taxpayers are protected when these volunteer fire departments take taxpayer money, which this year will be over $10 million that we'll fund our volunteer fire departments with. And all those two fire departments have to do is agree to a very simple contract, and they can get money for their capital expenses just like the other 12, 11--
Twelve.
Twelve volunteer fire departments are getting funded for their capital expenses. So I appreciate your concern, but I'm happy to talk to you about the facts if you're interested. That's all I have to say, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. McCann? Mr. Davis?
Don't have too much to say tonight. Thank you, Wyatt, for being here today. Thank you for what you've done in Raleigh for us. I know you've worked hard. I think your reputation up there has preceded your youth, and good job, man. Just thank you for what you're doing. Carter, always, man. Workshop today, thank you. You were so, I think what, it's, you have a job to do like any of us, but you were so well-prepared for the questions today. That's the impressive part, is you thought ahead, not just of the topic, but what might be asked of you, and I really appreciate that. It shows us that you value our time, so thank you for that. Mr. Jarman, I think it will be good for you and Mr. Bennett to discuss things because I don't think Mr. Bennett knows everything either. So perhaps you can share with him some of the other issues that, that at least I'm aware of, that, that what you have may be a little more factual than what he realizes. But I do appreciate you coming today, and again, it's my hope that we will work with Piney. I know at least Piney Green wants to work with us, that we will reach out and solve that one. I'm not aware of the situation yet with the other fire department, but just thankful for everyone here today. Thank you. Ms. Carey for giving me homework to do. We'll get that done and being willing to work with the churches in the local area. I'm excited about that as well. So, and for all the people watching, thank you for taking time out to watch. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Mr. Fagin?
I just thank everybody for coming tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Got a lot to say, but I'm not going to say it. Lot of opinions, I'm not going to voice them. I'm not even going to touch on what the Commissioners talked about because I have a very different opinion, and I'm pretty boisterous about that, but I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. If you want to know my opinion, how I feel, ask me. I'll be more than happy to. Have a great week.
I'm speechless.
Let's see if you keep it speechless.
I can't.
I'm pushing the timer.
Motion to adjourn is what I heard.
I'd second that.
No, we just appreciate everybody coming in tonight. This is what it is for. That's what the five minutes of public comments for, to come up and share your thoughts, your opinions, your concerns, and what you feel is necessary to share with us. And we'll continue to work and do what's in what we believe is in the best interest of everyone, and we appreciate Mr. Jarman coming in and the work he does there. I believe in Richlands, the work that's going on there. And I know, Mr. Smitherman, that the strategic planning team will be coming to Richlands to get the input from, matter of fact, it's going to be all of our volunteer fire departments in that, in that plan to really, to really dig down on what everybody needs and what's going to benefit everyone as we continue to move forward this. So number one, we appreciate the professionalism of the volunteers. We appreciate what you do because if you didn't have you, we'd all would have a very highly increased ISO rating. So we appreciate that effort, and we look forward to, as this continues to grow, to getting that input and build the best fire departments across Onslow County, all the volunteers, the municipalities, Camp Lejeune, and just really turn into what it is that you want. Not necessarily that, but all the citizens as well. So collectively, we'll be able to turn this into everything that we need and really work together in building that from, from strategic fire to strategic with our EMS stations and working together to build those, because at the end of the day, it's all about Onslow County, and that's the one thing that I want everyone to, to understand, is this is about Onslow County. From Onslow County schools, Onslow County government, Onslow County volunteer fire, EMS, it's just, this is what makes us go, and we are a great example of what, what government is about, representative, and being able to come to the microphone and share those, share those thoughts. Whether we agree or disagree, this is your, this is your forum as well. So as we continue to work together, we'll continue to make Onslow County a great place to live, work, learn, and raise a family. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved. We're adjourned.